Alderman Catalano?
Here.
Alderman Jacob?
Here.
Alderman Messina?
Here.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Here.
Alderman Zizmarski? Alderman E. Wesley?
Here.
Alderman R. Wesley? Alderman Woods? Mayor police.
Here. Declare core and present. Please stand, join, and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion to approve the city council minutes of April 21st, 2016.
I make the motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, corrections, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Posed? That passes. Do any citizens wish to be heard on matters not listed on the agenda? Okay, I have no written communiques. Next mayor's report. I'd like to announce that this Saturday, May 14th, from 10:00 to 2:00 at the Georgetown Square Shopping Center will be the green fair. Any recyclable, any electronics recyclable items or paper shredding can be brought between 10:00 and 2:00 at Georgetown Square. Next, Friday, May 20th, cop on top, which is a Special Olympics fundraiser at Dunkin' Donuts with the police department, and 516 West Irving Park in Wooddale. That's at Wooddale and Prospect, between 6:00 a.m. and 10:30 for the Special Olympics. And then we have Monday, May 30th, our Memorial Day Parade will start at 11:00 a.m. And this year, it will be starting on Addison Road, not Wooddale Road, from Elizabeth Drive all the way to the memorial. Road closures will be announced and posted. 10 to 2. Okay. Next, they have a mayor appointment. Does anybody have any objections, otherwise I'm gonna read them off and make one motion. Okay, we'll need a motion to approve for Stormwater Management Committee, reappointment of Gail Bedard for a three-year term, starting May 5th, 2016, expiring April 30th, 2019. Reappointment of Marge Calva for a three-year commencing on May 5th, 2016, and expiring April 30th, 2019. Reappointment of Dory Madonna for a three-year term commencing on May 5th and expiring April 30th, Police Pension Board, reappointment of George Ellison for a two-year term commencing on May 5th and expiring on April 30th, 2018. Police and Fire Commissioners, reappointment of L. Techmeier for a three-year term. Elmer, yes. Commencing on May 5th, 2016, and expiring April 30th, 2019. Community Development Commission, reappointment of Roy Sias Chairman, and also a two-year term commencing on May 5th, 2016, and expiring April 30th, 2018. Reappointment of Dave Woods for a two-year term commencing on May 5th, 2016, expiring April 30th, 2018. Appointment of Ron Damasco for a two-year term commencing on May 5th, 2016, and expiring April 30th, 2018. Alderman Woods is here. Appointment of George Vant, filling an unexpired term of Ralph Madonna for a one-year term commencing on May 5th, 2016, and expiring April 30th, 2017. Building Co., Board of Appeals, appointment of Marcia Camaras for a five-year term commencing on May 5th, 2016, expiring April 30th, 2021. Appointment of Sam Shortino, filling the unexpired term of Joe Coles for a four-year term commencing on May 5th, 2016, and expiring on April 30th, 2021. Wooddale for a greener tomorrow, reappointment of Barbara McCauley for a two-year term commencing on May 5th, 2016, expiring April 30th, 2018. Reappointment of Mark Winger for a two-year term commencing on May 5th, 2016, and expiring April 30th, 2018. Appointment of Joe Coles for a two-year term commencing on May 5th, 2016, and expiring on April 30th, 2018. Appointment of Pat Sampaletti for a two-year term commencing on May 5th, 2016, and expiring on April 30th, 2018. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes. Next, we have the 2016-2017 Vehicle Sticker Art Contest winner, Kayden Zadko Koka. If you could please come up to the podium. The city of Wooddale held a contest to design the city's 2016-2017 vehicle sticker. This year, the theme was Wooddale in the Future. Eligible contestants were Wooddale residents in kindergarten through eighth grade. Second grader Kayden Zadko Koka artwork entitled "New and Old Wooddale" was selected as the winner by those city council members. Kayden's description of his artwork, "Old Wooddale shows many trees and hills and happy kids. New Wooddale shows new roads, big houses, and wires for TV and computers, traffic lights, and gas stations, and happy kids." We'd like to present Kayden with, first of all, we have a certificate of award. What's your name, ma'am? We also have a Target gift card for $100. And we framed his artwork. Want to say thank you?
Thank you.
Would the family like to come up and take a couple of pictures? You can, if you'd like.
Really?
Yeah, sure, come on up.
You guys want all to get in, I'll take a picture? Taking a picture. With their phone, if they want. You guys want me to take a picture of all you guys together?
Yeah, go ahead.
Here. All right, everybody, get in. You guys, you guys all want to get in? Still family? Okay.
You sure? Ready?
All right. One, two, three. Take a couple.
Sure.
Okay. I think it's good. Oh, take a picture with the mayor, go ahead, sorry.
You gotta take one with the mayor, shake his hand.
Go ahead.
He wants a gift card.
Okay, ready?
Ready? Look at the camera.
One, two.
A total politician. You guys are out of a job.
He's a natural. Congratulations, buddy, good job.
Got a new artist in town.
All right.
Free for the seniors. Just turn it gravy a little.
And it's on YouTube also.
Oh, it's on YouTube.
And it'll be on for two years. On people's windshield. Yeah, there you go. Gotta drop that one. Actually, I hope they stay out, put it in there. Bye-bye.
All right. Next, we have the manager's report. Mr. Murmas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few items tonight. I had mentioned this, I believe, my last report, but I want to mention it again because of the importance. We have upcoming road closures due to the safety improvement project. For all those residents at home, there will be, Wooddale Road will be closed once again from May 23rd until June 11th. You can find more information online, there was also some information in the newsletter. And Irving Park Road, a small section of Irving Park Road, will be closed for Metro to put in some new rail tracks from July 5th until July 15th. That closure notice will also be going in the next newsletter, and there'll be some mailers out as well, and we will have some brochures at all the local restaurants for people to pick up if they're interested. Second item, the Tollway will be hosting an open house for the I-390 project. That is on Thursday, May 12th. That will be from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. And this one will be at Elk Grove Village Hall, Room E. Strategic plan, every other summer, the city council meets to review and renew its strategic plan, but one of the most important parts of the plan is tracking and following the plan throughout the year, especially the off-year. An update on the status of the initiatives that we talked about will be distributed to the council later this month. Staff has been working very hard to make sure they meet the goals the council sets, so you'll get that report later this month. And my last item, earlier this week, council, some council members and staff went down to Springfield to talk with Wooddale legislators, and all legislators, actually, and we stressed some very important topics, specifically important to Wooddale. And obviously, we want to, the most important topic is protecting municipal revenue, because that's how we fund a lot of our services, so we want to make sure that we have some face time with our legislators and stress the importance of these continued services. We were not able to solve the state's budget problem, unfortunately. The mayor did try his best, and Alderman Jacob, you tried, and Alderman Woods, you tried as well, I tried, we couldn't do it. Maybe next time. That concludes my report.
Thank you. We have no items on consent agenda. Committee Chairman reports planning and zoning, Alderman Catalano.
I have two, Mayor. An ordinance amend in the sign regulation set forth for Chapter 13 of the City of Wooddale Municipal Code. That is my motion.
You have a motion and a second. Any questions? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
And next is an ordinance amending Article 1, 4, and 6, Chapter 17 of the City of Wooddale Municipal Code. That is my motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Alderman Jacob. Questions? Alderman Woods, go ahead.
So anyway, on the page here, but public hearing notification requirements, this would probably apply to both, I think. Under, where it says posted notices were applicable, the city will provide or have applicant provide a posted notice on the subject property. We've always talked that those is those sandwich boards or whatever new board that comes up. In the old language, it used to say notice board or something like that, and just having the word notice would mean that somebody could put a piece of paper in the window of the building, on the other side of the building, and kind of, we've grown accustomed, not only in Wooddale, and all communities have seen that bigger sized billboard, so I was looking to just add that language, that it would be something of more substance, you know, portable billboard, size 30 inches by 40 inches, I think is what the city's looking at.
Mr. Cage, do you want to say anything on that, or Ms. Christie? Or is it noted, we know what we want? Ms. Christie, go ahead.
Yes, Mayor. So, the city is looking at revising the posted notices in terms of the signage that we're using, so there will be, and there currently is a current, a standard public hearing sign. We intend to keep it the same size. We, however, have not selected the vendor that we're going to use, but we intend to keep it at the same size if the product that we select allows. But it is standard practice for us to post a portable sign, currently that is on an A-frame that is posted on the properties, and we're just pursuing all options.
Good, follow.
And maybe the city attorney could...
I've already asked him, what's the language, correct language, so we can move forward.
Develop the language, just so that we, you know...
Go ahead, Mr. Bond.
Yeah, I would say, and you could approve it subject to final attorney review and approval, but I would have something in a sign, sufficient size, and with, both in terms of size and the contents of the size, so as to reasonably put the public on notice, but no less than, and we'll put a size, maybe we can check with the vendor and see what their standard sizes are, and we can do that. And then I'll submit that around, and if somebody has an issue, then you can reconsider the passage at the next meeting and get some additional language if that's necessary. But I understand what you're saying, so it's, you know, it doesn't blow away in the rain, or, you know, the...
Well, or sometimes, you know, if you put one in the window and magically a bush starts growing in front of it or something. Nobody's ever gonna see that.
Right. All right. So you're okay with that?
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Alderman Wesley, did you have your hand up, or I wasn't sure?
No.
Oh, no, no, I saw the pen go up.
Oh, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Is it a motion or going to...
Well, I'm gonna answer that next. First, I wanted to... So Alderman Catalano, you were the motioner, do you agree?
Yes, I do.
Amendment, Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Okay, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
So, we're gonna vote this with those changes, so this is gonna be in play, or are we going to re-vote on it again at the council next meeting? Unless... What we wanna see the changes, make sure we got the changes right?
Hold on a second. Basically, the attorney, subject to attorney review, he said he would send it, and if people had questions, then we could bring it up for reconsideration at the next meeting. Otherwise, if there's no problem, there's no need to bring it up to reconsider. Correct, Mr. Bond?
That is correct.
Okay. All right, we have, any other questions on this? Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yep.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Health and Safety, Alderman Eugene Wesley.
I'll make a motion to approve, very loosely approving surf, service agreement between the City of Wooddale, ex-credit state, and local solicitor, and/or make a track guard enforcement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions on this? Roll call, please.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
Yes.
And that passes.
That's the end of my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works, Alderman Woods.
I have one report, Mayor. Resolution seeking to approve an agreement between the City of Wooddale and Baxter and Woodman for Public Works Building Repair Engineering Services in a not-to-exceed amount of $9,760.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Questions? Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Mayor, according to the report that I received from the city manager, there's, the report just said they looked at them to get be replaced. Now, do they have to be replaced right this second? Because simple reason is, it's $40,000 to $50,000 that's not in the CIP, okay, to be redone. So are we just going to approve this for $40,000, $50,000, or can we hold off until next year and put it in the CIP? I mean...
Mr. Murmas?
First of all, Mayor, I'm not done.
Oh, I'm sorry.
First of all, when it was designed to us, we got no pictures, no engineering report. It was just, they wanted $40,000, $50,000 repair.
That was the guesstimate, I believe, right? Yeah.
Okay.
If I recall.
Whatever. But what is a big rush to replace them this year and not put it in the CIP? This is like spending money, like you talked about, making donations to all these charities and everything else, it ain't there. Not this year. So, I mean, I, if someone could convince me that is that critical, that we have to do it right this year, I can't, I can't support $50,000 coming out of the CIP.
Mr. Murmas.
Previous direction from council, and it's been longstanding for a couple of years now, was obviously the 720 central building for Public Works. We know that that's not a long-term building for us, we do need a new building in the future. The direction was only do the type of repairs that are necessary repairs and nothing else. This repair, we believe, is a safety concern. The poles are steel iron beams that support the structure are rotting at the bottom. We called Baxter and Woodman out, their structural engineer to look at it. They thought it needed to be addressed. Throughout the course of the year, it is typical for things to come up that may not have been budgeted for, you cannot anticipate for everything, especially something like this, where it was specifically told, don't fix anything unless something comes up and it needs to be fixed. There was no report ahead of time because that's what we're paying for today. I guess that's all I have.
Thank you. You have a follow-up, Alderman Wesley?
Yeah, so your statement does now is saying the building's unsafe. That's the statement, I'm being out of this, that the building's unsafe. Well, if the building's unsafe, then we got an issue, Mr. Bond, because if we have an open house there for Public Works, then that, that building should be closed down. I mean, I just don't understand this.
Mr. Bond?
No, they didn't render an opinion that the building was unsafe, they have a...
He just did.
Well, no, he didn't. And so, what you got is, if the building was unsafe, it would be posted unsafe and it would be closed. There's an issue that needs to be addressed in order to prevent that from occurring, and that's what they're, they're doing, is if you, you know, if you have a bad shingle on your house, you're, you've got a roof problem, and you should replace the shingle before you have to replace the entire roof if it deteriorates. And I think that's what the engineer is trying to do, is to prevent further deterioration and address the issue that exists out there now, with the understanding that there's, you know, you're not going to redo the entire building and spend that kind of money on a building that may not have a long future with the, with service to the, to the city.
You have a follow-up before I go to another?
Nope.
Alderman Messina?
I don't think it's broken against. My bigger concern is, like you just said, a shingle starts to go on your roof. Well, I noticed that ahead of time, and I start saving money so that I can buy that roof for a few years. So my bigger concern is, how do we not see this rotting at the bottom years ago? Because it didn't just erode and rust overnight, and then all of a sudden magically, it's a critical emergency. Looking at the few pictures we got, it's bad. That's something that should have been noticed years ago, so that's my problem. I don't want, I get the money, I just don't understand how this was such a big miss.
Mr. Murmas.
Again, I'm not gonna argue. I will say, though, sooner or later, it would have to rust for you to notice it, correct? Or you'd have to notice some visible thing to get effects correct through observation.
I'm pretty confident a chunk of metal...
Mr. Bond, Messina, you have a follow-up?
A chunk of metal wouldn't just have fallen off in a year. I'm pretty confident that would not happen. With steel, give me wood, maybe I'd give you that, but not steel.
Go ahead.
Regardless, I mean, obviously, there's, it's in disrepair, needs to be fixed. When it's noticed, it's in disrepair, it has to get into disrepair, so if we could've done it a year or two earlier, okay.
Go ahead, I'll follow.
My bigger concern is, what do we have in play, right? We need it now, that, that's fine, right? So my bigger concern is, if we can't even see a steel beam that, you know, post that's rotting, what else is happening here? How do we not have a process in place to see something is very, I mean, it's out in the open. I mean, there's nothing blocking those posts. I mean, literally, you're there every day, these guys are there at least eight hours a day, seven days a week, how do we not see this, address this years ago? That's my, that's my concern. What else in the city is eroding that we are gonna wait till last minute to just fall on somebody? That's my concern.
Oh, Mr. Murmas, go ahead.
We did have a, OSHA was out, and we had an independent safety inspector come out in the summer of 2014 for that building. They did not notate that? So it wasn't as if it's falling down. I, I know you're laughing, but they're the professional. I don't inspect buildings, that's all I can tell you.
Do you have a follow-up, otherwise I go to Alderman Woods? You have a follow-up?
So did OSHA pass it last year too?
They've passed it. We don't do the safety inspect, that particular inspection every year, we do it every two to three years historically.
Would it pass this year?
Go ahead.
If OSHA would...
Mr. Murmas?
I do not know. The structural engineer at Baxter and Woodman said they thought it should be fixed.
Alderman Woods, you have a question?
Yeah. So looking at that, I mean, we could debate back and forth when somebody should have fixed that, that did take quite a bit of time, so people did see it, but my opinion is, you know, that's a more economical fix than what we're discussing. And you can go to the Elizabeth Bridge and see worse delamination on steel, and we say that bridge is still okay, so I think we're maybe slightly hyping what that delamination at the bottom is, and there, there are some fairly economical fixes to that. It's a common occurrence in buildings that have steel beams, especially if there's indoor parking with them, so, for all that's worth.
Any other questions?
I would, I would like to see the report from last year from OSHA on that, then.
Two years ago.
Two years ago. I would, really would like to see that report.
Okay. Noted by the manager. Alderman Jacob?
Just a question, since, do we have safety inspections done at all the city buildings at some point, at every given X amount of years, or is that...
Looking back in the records, it was about a two to three-year rotation, every building. We actually just did one at the treatment plant this year.
Alderman Messina, go ahead.
So I'd like to make a motion to table this, and I, as part of my motion, I don't want to see a full motion or a complete spike every move, but certainly all.
I'll second your motion.
We have a motion to table, and a second. Roll call.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
And that passes. That concludes your report?
That concludes my report, Mayor.
Thank you. Finance and Administration, Alderman Jacob.
One report. An ordinance amending Article 8, Chapter 8, Section 8.05 of the Wooddale Municipal Code concerning honorary vehicles licenses, that would be my motion.
Second.
Any questions? Alderman Catalano?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that my motion that I presented April 14th, because there was a little confusion. So this motion is that we're gonna, for those who qualify, the seniors, the disabled, and the military, we're gonna eliminate that dollar fee, because it's costing the city more money to process that dollar fee and do a multiple two-year sticker. And streamline the vehicle sticker, in fairness, right now, it's an honest system, the people coming for it. So with that, we also want to obtain vehicle data from the Secretary of State, so that is the motion that I presented back on the 14th, April 14th.
Alderman Messina?
So to add on to Alderman Catalano's initial request, a few different things. I did some math and kind of went over this with Brad, because I guess there was some current concern. So, total impact is 1,315 residents. Residents that we could actually save, even if it's a buck, I don't care about the dollar, I care about the inconvenience. When we go back and we look at the people that we're asking to do a, do this for, this, you're looking at people that are disabled, you're looking at people that are seniors, it's more the inconvenience. So we did the math, right? And so, when we did the math, we looked at 20... at $355 for printing, and we looked at $600 in postage to send you a letter saying, hey, we need your dollar, and come on in. Makes no sense. So when we did the math, it was about a grand of savings next year that we would see. So really, the net effect is about $300 to save people the inconvenience. 1,300 people, the inconvenience of coming in, and the dollar, in two years. And did I mention that Kayden put together a pretty awesome sticker? So they're going to get it for two years in their windshield, right? So to me, I think it's a, it's a win-win-win. Kayden gets a sticker up there for two years. We're, we're talking about minimal impact as far as revenue, and we're talking about actually finally doing something that directly impacts the convenience of, of the residents. It's 10 percent of the residents that are out there. If someone said, hey, could you do something that will impact 10 percent of your residents? I'd do it. So I am 100 percent behind Alderman Catalano's, and I think it's long overdue.
Hold on, one question.
Oh, you don't?
You just said two years. I mean, Kayden's, Kayden's picture will be on all the other cars, for sure. What was it, two years? All of a sudden, I heard two years.
It's a two-year sticker.
I don't recall that being the motion. I recall it being eliminated.
No.
No.
For seniors, you'll have to come in twice.
Two years makes it cheaper? Just saying.
Those statements were calculated on two years, based on our...
Alderman Woods?
Yeah, when we, when we talked about this, I mean, that's fine with me. I think that the, the biggest thing that came up, and I thought we mentioned it, was to look into, because then we're running two systems. We've got a two-year system going and a one-year system. I'm okay with the convenience. I, I really don't care about the dollar. Doesn't make that sense. You, you guys pointed that out, but I think it's going to become confusing who gets a sticker and what stickers on what car. So one's on a car for two years, other cars have them different stickers every year. There were some issues of, you know, are, are you going to be, be able now to look at the car and go, you know, that's a senior's car, based on that sticker? So two things, the, the duration, or I guess separate duration, one is, one group's got a two-year sticker and the other group's got a one-year sticker. Is that going to be confusing? Because I offered the suggestion, can we make everybody's sticker a two-year sticker? Because there'd be some savings in that.
Go ahead, Alderman Messina.
So, you know, I mean, I'm going to guess not at heart, because according to the finance director, it's the interns that actually process it, so I don't think it would be that difficult, but I like your idea of the two years across the board.
Right, so there's consistency.
That's 40,000, 10,000 people with this sticker up there, in old places.
Are you looking for an amended motion? Is that what you're asking?
Just throwing it out there if somebody cares to amend. I mean, we discussed it, because now we got to figure out what the cost is per year, so it would be tougher.
Well, I was just about to say, so that just took 130,000 out of the following year's budget.
Or do you raise the price of the sticker a little bit and give it for two years? Make it 40 dollars for two years, as opposed to thirty, what is it now?
Fifteen, fifteen.
Fifteen? Okay, so 20 dollars for two years, as opposed to 15 dollars each year.
Unless we want to table the committee. So, so we have a motion, a second, just for, as it stands. Roll call, unless there's other questions. Alderman Jacob?
So the, the way the motion is, it is everything that Alderman Catalano said. That's all included in that motion, I mean?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we ready for the roll call, gentlemen?
Yes.
Alderman Catalano?
Yes.
Alderman Jacob?
Yes.
Alderman Messina?
Yes.
Alderman Sorrentino?
Yes.
Alderman E. Wesley?
Yes.
Alderman Woods?
abstain.
Pardon me?
Abstain.
It's by vote, passes.
That is a...
Wait, wait. Is that true?
Yep. That's fine.
Okay.
That concludes my reports, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Under other business, airport noise, Alderman Jacob?
I have a couple things on this. Number one is, we did get a FER update at our last meeting. Two main focus points. FER is possibly looking at considering some legal options, possible class action suits by residents, and that, this is through FER and not the city. So they're doing some research on that. ONCC, Wooddale Total Complaints, were 27,034 from 8,260 complainants. And Bensonville had 80,000 total complaints with only 43 complainants. So definitely a lot more people complaining in Wooddale than even in Bensonville. Three, our, the Wooddale Hair Noise Group wanted to have a small spot in the newsletter to put some kind of small update of what's going on. And number four, Friday, May sixth, at 8:00 a.m., the ONCC is having a meeting about the Fly Quiet Rotation. That's at Cafe La Cava on 2777 South Manheim Road in Des Plaines, Friday, May sixth, at 8:00 a.m. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Stormwater Commission, Alderman Jacob?
For Stormwater, Stormwater Committee wanted some type of presentation of how the 390 is going to affect the flooding for the city. So we'd like to get somebody, and my guess is H.R. Green would probably be the best person to come in here and maybe talk to the Stormwater Committee and give them an update. That concludes my report.
Thank you. And a thank you to all the volunteers from Stormwater and people who were not on Stormwater Committee for the, the creek cleanup last, no, not last Saturday, two Saturdays ago. Approval list of bills, Alderman Jacob?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the list of bills of May fifth, 2016, for 262,611 dollars and 95 cents. That is my motion.
Second.
Questions? Alderman Wesley?
Mayor, I have a couple.
Sure, go ahead.
Alpha Graphic on page one for one hard USB drives, two gigabytes for 477 dollars, 48 cents. What's that for?
Mr. Murmurs?
That is an economic development initiative to highlight some of the exciting things going on in the city.
And where are those going to be handed out?
To potential developers or at trade shows.
Okay, and then...
Do I have a follow-up?
Yes, I have a couple more.
Go ahead.
Eighty dollars a business. This is the business cards. Oh, shopping center business ad circulation? Eighty dollars?
Mr. Murmurs, you have a question?
Again, a economic development initiative. You'll see some of these on the list of bills, advertising in various developer magazines. I put some very nice graphics in the managers' reports, the Leaf logo, and the Thorpe, Corn Dale, Thorndale Corporate Main Street inlays, things to that order. I'm sure you guys are getting them correct, the graphics. I've been sending some random graphics.
You have a follow-up?
Not on that one, but, so page nine is part of that deal, France, Public Heartland Real Estate, Four Color, for $2,000. Is that part of that, too?
Mr. Murmurs?
What page?
Page nine. Heartland Real Estate?
That, I guess, would be so. I'd have to verify, but I do seem to remember that. I think Kelly's not in yet.
Oh, Mr. Chrissy, can you answer that one?
Yes, as the manager stated, a lot of these initiatives are coming through the list of bills. And the one that you're specifically referring to, Alderman Wesley, is for the Shopping Center Business Magazine, and that is sent out to, it's, it's mostly for retail businesses. I know that that's one of the initiatives of the council, is to attract retail businesses. And so this is one of the outlets that we're using. Alpha Graphics has done the design work, which is why you see some of the design invoices for design from Alpha Graphics. And then there's actually the cost of the advertisement to put it in the publication.
Thank you.
Okay, on page 18, I take it that other issue is for that, too, for Suburban Act, two sets of graphics and lettering for 1,000, 1,000 Einhardt. Is that part of that, too?
Hold on.
Page 18?
Chief, is that you?
That's the squad wraps for the new squads that were received.
Go ahead, Alderman Wesley, another one?
And then what about on page 12, the police supplies for 1,262 dollars? Is that the...
Chief?
That is a replacement SWAT rifle.
Okay.
Go ahead.
No, now I would get to the, I won't talk about the other one, but we'll talk off the record with the other one. And then the page 16, the R-Eagle electrician for 3,047 dollars on page 16?
R-Eagle?
Yep. What is that?
Mr. Cage?
Thank you. Yes, that is a combination of three separate bills from the same company. That's some of the work we've done downstairs, removal of the interior office build, office space to create the additional cubicle space, the additional electronic wiring, and then the connection to the network, so we can hook up those four new cubicles to the computer network.
Thank you. Do I have another one?
No, I'm not on the list of bills. Is the P-card's list on the list of bills?
Yes.
Okay. So let's go to the 187 dollars and 11 cents to a grain resort.
Mr. Murmurs?
That was for a Public Works Conference that one of the assistant directors attended.
Okay. Let's go to Jim's auto body repair. One was for 6,995 dollars and 56 cents. The other one was for 1,221 dollars and 2 cents. Were these vehicles involved in accident?
Yes, the 6,000 dollar one was the fault of nobody at the, at the city, and we did already receive full reimbursement for that. The other one was the fault of somebody at the city, and I believe progressive discipline was followed in that instance. And also, as a reminder, all the accident reports, sometimes you may see them in the list of bills, as with everything, usually they're the month after and the month ending report. So if you see something on list of bills during May, it would be in the May-ending report. So that report's actually coming out in a week. That's always the third week of the month, is that monthly report.
Did you have a follow-up on that?
No, I can, I'm done. Can I ask a follow-up on that?
You have, Alderman Messina, go ahead.
Yeah, because I, I asked about that bill earlier today, that, was it 1,000, 1221? And all I got was, yeah, it was an accident, but didn't hear what, and what happened. Can we know what happened? I know, I know what happened on the first one, but...
The 6,000 or the 1,000?
No, I know about the 6,000, the 1221.
The 1,000, one of our plow trucks, I think, backed into another one of vehicles.
And there was this, there was progressive discipline?
Correct, correct.
Do you have a follow-up? Oh, you're done? Alderman Messina?
Alderman E. Wesley stole my thunder on a lot of these questions, but I just have a couple. So one of the questions, it was on the P-card. So I pass replenishment for 40 dollars. I just want to make sure, right? So we got, we paid the 40 bucks, which I know is automatic, right? I get, I do the same thing. What's the process to make sure that if I'm driving, I won't name the department, but that I don't take it out at the end of the night and put it in my own personal vehicle and go home and use it?
Mr. Murmurs?
I believe there is a checkout policy in place, and then if there is a perceived, like, issue of abuse, where we think somebody may be doing it outside the normal checkout process, then we would go ahead and investigate further. We have caught one person, I believe, abusing through that checkout process, and there were progressive discipline in that.
You have a follow-up, go ahead.
So we actually have city vehicles that leave outside the perimeter often enough that warrants the I-Pass?
Well, the I-Pass was purchased, I believe, five or six years ago. It is used, it's a convenience thing. We've only had one instance of abuse in the five or six years, so...
I'm good with it, okay.
Go ahead.
He got that one, he got that one. So this is a Nick question, actually. So there was a purchase Best Buy for APX, that's, was that a battery, UPS battery backup?
Mr. Murmurs?
That was actually a battery backup that we used in our server room upstairs, and we needed it in short order, and we actually got Best Buy to match a lower price online. So that's why we went over there to pick it up, getting it faster than we could have had a chip that price matched.
I didn't know it was for the server room? Okay, okay.
That was probably the one that went out on the weekend, I think I was here that day, and we had one of the officers trying to replace it or something.
That is correct.
Okay. Last question I had was, so I saw a lot of fleet maintenance charges, right? So my question was, I know we've done a pretty good consolidation for some of the facility's maintenance, but I see an opportunity for fleet maintenance in trying to consolidate. I see a lot of one-off charges. Is that something we can look into?
Mr. Murmurs?
I will definitely mention that to Matt, and we'll bring it up, staff meeting, and we'll give you an answer yes or no in the package in the next couple of weeks, for sure.